Evening, it is now six o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education Work Session to order. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved Heather.
Second Sandra Jackson Lett.
A motion to approve the agenda has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Jackson Lett. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Is there any discussion um for, well, let's say, we want to recognize the visitors? Do we have any visitors tonight? Well, hi, Ms. Tina, how are you? And I take it that you don't have anything to say? Well, we're glad that you're here and glad you're feeling better, okay? Um, so no visitors want to speak tonight. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's cabinet updates. Dr. Oats, please introduce your cabinet.
Yes, I think first is Ms. John, our CTA director. We have some exciting news to share about our 2023 CTA achievement data. And so I'll yield to you, Ms. John.
Better, thanks. Good evening Chairman Chairwoman Brown, members of the board, Dr. Oats. Um, I'm going to share with you this afternoon's updates regarding career technical education. I also have one action item and I'll also share updates regarding profile of a grad. So first is my action item. Each year is a requirement of the Perkins Grant that we receive to fund a portion of our programs. It is a requirement that the board um vote on the approve the local plan. The local plan, um, the financial impact of that is three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and three dollars. And on the next slide, you'll see kind of how that's broken down. We have two hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars coming from federal grants, one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars coming from state grants. And then we have fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars in ag grants. And those grants that are support, um, you'll see there the extended day grants. It's support our teachers for the time they put in after school with our student organizations and um trips. I like to start each year with um what I'm presenting on career technical education and reminding everyone of what our mission is in career technical education. And that is to provide our students with technical skills and advanced training to be successful, regardless of what path they choose um after graduation. So we do that through career-focused educational opportunities, work-based learning and youth apprenticeship opportunities, leadership development and competitive events. And then by having our students be involved with their student organizations in the community. Um, I know that you all have the slides in front of you. I've reviewed the slides already, so I'll go through these pretty quickly. But just to kind of give it, give you all an update on where our programs are as far as the numbers. Um, we currently have thirty high school pathways, ten middle school programs, an elementary school program. And then our students have the opportunity to participate in seven student organizations that are related to those pathways or programs. And what's great is that all of our pathways and programs align to the national sixteen career clusters. Again, I'll just click through these, but this gives you an idea of uh the programs we have in our high schools at the Career Academy and at the middle school. One thing I will note at the middle school is this year we did add one new program. And that is at Conyers Middle School Law and Public Safety was added this year. In the middle school, our students have the opportunity to earn Carnegie credit and three career technical education um courses. That's introduction to business and technology, introduction to software technology, and then basic ag science. I'm excited to share that we have our first elementary CTA program this year over at CJ Hicks. Um, they're going to be offering agriculture education in grades K through five. And I had an opportunity to meet the teacher there on Monday and she's great. Um, a ball of energy and excitement, so it's going to be great for the students. Now I'm going to share a little bit of information about some of the achievements that we've had um over the past year. As you can see, our CTA enrollment is up in our middle and our high schools, which is great because that means that more students are able to take advantage of the opportunities that are offered in career and technical education. And these are unduplicated numbers. So if you look at the actual enrollment, we get closer to about ten thousand because most of our middle and high school students take at least more than, take more than one course per year. Our pathway completers is up uh this year. And um a pathway completer, I like to refer to it as kind of like a college major. So these are students that took three or more classes in um career and technical education. And they were sequential in a particular pathway. So so if I'm a healthcare student, I took three, at least three uh healthcare classes. And what's great about this is because that um means that they have the opportunity to pursue a certification in that area. And that's where, that's where we see this number. I was super, super, super excited. My goal is to get above eighty percent and to just keep adding it. And we're almost there. We had an um almost nine-point uh growth as far as how students did on those end of pathway assessments. And that number is big because that means that more students earn those certifications, which will help them when they're um looking for jobs, uh when they are pursuing post-secondary. It gives them that, that um, that uh leg up. And so that's the exciting part about that. And what I like to remind everyone is that the assessments that these students are taking are the same ones that adults in that field would take. So if um it were, say, a graphic design, our students are going to take that Adobe assessment or um the same mouse assessment that um people in the industry would take. So this equates to like real dollars for those, those students. And one thing I'd like to mention about end-of-pathway assessments too, something that I really made a point to try and encourage um students last year is that most of them now also uh will give students at least three college credit hours. So if they pass that assessment, most, I mean, that's hundreds, if not thousands, saved to parents too. So if they take it and they pass it, um, there's a transcript that can be printed from the organization that equates to at least three hours in most colleges. Yes, yes. This year we had an increase in our diploma seals. And these are career-ready diploma seals. So the students that completed the pathway, that um passed their assessment, that maybe even like some of our work-based learning students that earned the soft skill certification, our RTC students who earned a certain ranking um level. These students get a special seal on their diploma. And so I was glad to see that number increasing this year also. We went up to six hundred and eighteen of our seniors that received that recognition this year. And some of them received uh more than one diploma seal uh because some of them got distinguished or leadership just based on their involvement in the community, um, how many hours they put in, or again, like our RTC students who um had earned a special ranking. Next is our CTA graduation rate. We increased uh this year. We're up to ninety-nine uh point one-three percent. And so we got to find that one kid, one or two. Um, but again, pleased with this information. Um, it's good to know that our students are graduating and going on to pursue whatever their post-secondary options are. I think you all had Dr. Brandy Johnson share with you last month about work-based learning. But um our work-based learning numbers increased significantly this year. And again, all of this equates to opportunities for students. And to have more students out in the community, taking advantage of the opportunity to work and um find out what their career pathway is about hands-on, um, something you can't beat. Each year, our CTA teachers also have the opportunity to go back in industry. And so whatever their pathway is that they teach in, they go and spend at least eight hours with someone in the community in that field so that they too can remember what's going on in industry. It gives them the opportunity to interview someone that's in their pathway, but also to work hands-on with that individual and to see what kind of equipment is being used in the industry. So they can bring that back and let me know, hey, we need such and such. Because what they're using now in my field is X, Y, Z. So um, this was a, a very good initiative. The teachers really enjoyed it. Um, and it gives them the opportunity to stay abreast of what's going on currently in their field also. One of the big initiatives, uh, not only from the Department of Ed, but here in, in Rockdale County with, I have to mention, strong support from the community is fostering entrepreneurship. We've offered professional learning to our teachers on how to infuse entrepreneurship in all their career technical education courses. Um, we're building and more school-based enterprises. Uh, there have been student workshops offered on entrepreneurship. And then this year we had our first um inaugural, should say, um entrepreneurship competition. And that competition was called Flex and it's foundational leadership and entrepreneurship experience. It was a shark tank-type competition in which our students um competed and they had to present before the panel of judges. So picture it there in the bottom corner is our panel of judges and our winners from this year. Those students, they are the top three. Um, one of them, I think Isaac is a, is a senior, I think. But the, the other two, uh, other three students will be returning. And those that came in second or third place will have the opportunity to compete again this year. Only the top winner can't compete again. So we're excited to make that even bigger and better this year. We're starting off earlier because our goal is to try and um compete in a statewide competition. So um, look for us probably around March to, to roll out uh the, the final presentation for students. Now I'll transition a little bit and give you all an update on the profile of a graduate. The profile of a graduate came about as um one of the action steps in our strategic plan. And that was to create the profile of a graduate and then to embed that into our curriculum. And what the profile of a graduate is, is outside of the academics, what skills, knowledge and attributes do we want our students to have when, by the time they graduate? The profile of a grad came about not only as a result of the strategic plan, but to lay out expectations on what we want our students to have for them to be college and career-ready. I'm going to involve stakeholder engagement. And then, of course, it's about continuous improvement. And when we got feedback from um our stakeholders, there were a lot of skills and attributes, as you can see there, that kind of um came out of that. But as you can see, some of them kind of rose to the top. And based on that, uh, there were eight attributes that were identified as what we wouldn't want to see in the, in a graduate in Rockdale County public schools. And that is a student that can collaborate, communicate, that is creative innovator, problem solver, critical and reflective thinker, civic and global contributor, self-directed and adaptable, and technologically advanced. After these things were identified, the next step, which is not included in this presentation, but was shared with our leaders um at Startup, was defining what each of these attributes look like when, when they want to apply it to a student. So what's next? Well, now that we know what the attributes are and what they, how they um are defined with regard to students, the next step that we'll spend time this year doing is making sure that those are aligned in the curriculum K-12, offering professional development to teachers on how to make sure that they are um integrating those skills into their uh lessons and then assessing and getting feedback on it. And of course, continuously getting engagement from our stakeholders on that. And that concludes my presentation. Were there any questions?
Yes. And as you all are following the strategic plan, um, areas for CTAe, um, does that include like the pathway for um teachers?
Yes, it does.
So um, I know a couple of students that graduated here, but they stayed in the town where they went to school. I was wondering what kind of efforts are we, um, that do we have in trying to recruit some of our alumni um back here for teaching? And I understand that there is a teacher, you know, shortage, not just here, but all over the U.S. Um, but are there any efforts? Because I know we recognize them each year before they go off to college and we award them, you know, um, their certifications that they receive before they leave here, that they received in the pathway. But we invested in them. And so I was wondering, do we have some kind of catalog to track these students and to also try to attract them back to come here and teach?
Well, that program is an industry-certified program. And one of the things she, the instructor in that class, um, in that pathway does have to do is keep, kind of keep up with those students and where they're going. But your question is so timely because um this summer, Michelle Stevens and I actually met on that and started developing a plan over the next couple of years of what we can do. I'd love to, to share that with you um or with, with the board if you are interested in that. Some things that we can do um to try and get to attract those students back. Of course, we'll have to run that through you all once it's fully teased out. But now that the teacher in that program is back, we have a meeting, in fact, um, on the eighteenth, I think it is, next week, the three of us to kind of look at that and see what we can do to encourage those students to come back. So very timely question.
Ms. John again.
Yes, sir.
I was looking at the work-based learning numbers. And in twenty eighteen, we had a hundred and fifty-nine and we saw the decrease, right? And I'm sure the pandemic had something to do with the numbers decreasing. But um even from last year to this year, we now jumped almost fifty, um. The numbers increased that much. Is it, why? Is it because we have more collaboration with the community? Is it, what, what is the, um, what is the cause for the decline than the increase?
Well, I think the decline again was coming out of pandemic and um some, some of our spec, particularly our healthcare positions, which is a larger portion um of our placements, um, were a little slower about getting students back in there. But I, one thing I know for sure that probably paid, played a big impact on that was the recruitment efforts. And last year we had two um work-based learning coordinators in place. And of course, you all were made aware, I guess, last week, I mean, last month, that Ms. Tammy Maddox retired. And so um our goal though is to try and keep those numbers up uh even with that. Because more students, like I said, are getting opportunities. Um, I think that with the two of them working together, they were out in the community. Uh, of course, with two people, you can be out in the community a lot more and just recruiting efforts, yeah.
Dion, I want to, um, I'm sorry, may need to be too careful. I, I want to commend you and your, your, I say your team, obviously, it is the team effort. But I want to commend you and your leadership CTAe because uh we can't understate the import of the, of the achievement gains across the board. And particularly with EOPA, the end-of-pathway assessments, that's huge. Um, for the reasons you articulated, students are able to, at most colleges, uh, able to, that can translate into some actual hours for them. But also, we, we, this is the highest that we've seen in, in several years. And so we know we had the two years where it was waived at the height of the pandemic. But it's great to see that type of almost a nine-point increase. So kudos to you and your team.
Thank you. I work with a great group of teachers um who are about making a difference um in students' lives. And so I give, I'll pass that on to them because I couldn't do it without those, um, without those teachers.
Sorry, before you go, I do have a question. I um, I attended um conference today on EV and um the presenters at the state level were talking about um the students that we now have graduating from high school are, um, the numbers are down thirty percent in terms of who wants to go to college. Seventy percent are pursuing um higher education and thirty percent are going into the workforce. Are you seeing that in um our school system as our students are now coming into high school, having these options to do work-based learning, CTAe pathway? Are we tracking those numbers to see if, you know, when they graduate, we're actually um having thirty percent go towards the workforce and seventy percent into the um collegiate years?
Well, I wouldn't say tracking all of those students, but I know that we do keep up with our work-based learning students um to see exactly where they end up. Do they go directly into the workforce two-year, four-year military? And we do that until they, um, for at least four years after they complete. I would say that, and we were excited, I'm sure, um, last month, Dr. Johnson may have shared this with you all. That's one thing I do want to, you know, look at more carefully because we did have students that signed or committed to going directly into the, to the workforce because they had completed the pathway. They had completed an internship or work-based learning with a particular company. And that company agreed to go ahead and take them on as apprentices um and start them off with a, with a nice salary to continue to go. And some of those students even are still going to go to post-secondary. Uh, but that company is helping to pay for their, their um post-secondary work.
And, and I guess that's me, that's what I'm asking. I, I think there's a distinction between the work-based learning students versus um the students who are, we are now graduating at ninety-nine point one-three percent, training them with um these skills. Are they actually going out into the workforce? And I think it'd be important for us to see when they graduate, what are, what are they telling us? Right? Are we going to, are we actually, um, again, these were industry professionals from all over Georgia today saying that thirty percent of these kids are now coming into the workforce and seventy percent are going on to university. And they're expecting those numbers to jump even higher because kids don't want the debt that comes with collegiate um bills.
I think that's a great idea for us to maybe come up with some kind of follow-up survey to kind of.
I appreciate graduation.
Mm-hmm.
But to give you more work, want to give you more, thank you.
No, 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 that's a great idea. So thank you for sharing that. All right, I think I'll hand it over to Beth Gillis.
Yeah, Beth is coming, thank you Dion. Beth is coming to share our twenty-twenty-three uh advanced placement achievement data uh and also give us a gifted update as well, right?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Dr. Oats, Madam Chair Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, and distinguished board members. I thank you for letting me be able to come tonight to share with you about some of the great things going on in RCPS with our gifted and advanced placement students. I'm supported tonight by my director, Reniadi Roland, and my K-five gifted lead specialist, Stacy Gillespie. First thing we want to look at is our gift account. And as Dr. Oats mentioned, we're looking at last year's data just to kind of let you know where we ended and how wonderful our students did when we gave them the opportunity for rigor in the classroom. If you notice, we started in August with around fourteen hundred students. By the end of the school year, we were at one thousand eight hundred and seven students. That is thankful to the combined efforts of the Office of Advanced Academics with Stacy Gillespie, but also with all of our gifted lead teachers in the school. Also have to commend the board as well. You opened up the Office of Advanced Academics, gave us this opportunity to do this. We're able to make sure that we're in those schools and that those teachers are identifying our students who are walking in the hallways. Um, to kind of give you a little bit of three-year longitudinal data, in twenty-twenty-one, we were at one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight, twenty-one, twenty-two, one thousand seven hundred and eighty-three. And at the end of last year, like I stated, one thousand eight hundred and seven. So we have seen an increase in the past three years. Got to move on to advanced placement. We offer advanced placement in all of our schools, traditional schools, as well as Magnet, RCA, and RVC. We offer AP here in RCPS in mathematics, social studies, STEM, and sciences. The first thing that we're looking at here is our advanced placement data from last school year. And we're going to look at the AP distribution of scores. If you remember, um, last year I came and spoke with you. And one of the things that we talked about, Ms. Duncan, you know, I've talked about as well, is the power of a two. And those students taking that exam for their first time, getting that exposure to the test and then how they do the second time around. If you notice, we increased our threes. So I want to look at that power of the two. I tracked some of those students. They did take their first AP test last year. They set for their second one this year. So we're starting to see that increase there. Um, the next thing that I want to point out to you is our three fours and fives. For the second year in a row, we have seen an increase. This year it was five percent in our number of students who have scored a three, four, or five on the AP exam. This is our enrollment scores, okay? So here we're looking at how many students took exams and then where, what score they made on that. What I want to point out to you is that for the third year in a row, again, we increased our number of students who took AP exams. We went from five hundred and eleven in SY twenty-one, twenty-two to six hundred and four in SY twenty-two, twenty-three. Also want to point out to you that many times when you um have more students take a test, sometimes your scores might go down. But I want to applaud the students of RCPS because for two years in a row, we have increased our enrollment of students taking AP. We've also increased our number of students who've made three fours and fives. So that's a blessing to them and also to the teachers that teach them in those classrooms. So want to point that out about the great work our students are doing. Um, the next thing that we see here is our AP Scholar and Capstone data. If you look at this, last year we had eighty-three AP Scholars and Capstone students. This year we have increased that to a hundred and four. Also note to be this, there's various levels, AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Distinction, AP Scholar with Honors. This encompasses all of those and you have to take multiple AP exams in order to be here. So I'm very proud of our students for that as well. Also, in addition to that, RCPS students outscored our state mean score in seven courses. And we increased our global mean score to eleven courses this year. Last year we outscored the globe in seven. This year we increased it to eleven. So very proud of the work that they and their teachers are doing. Um, just a couple of things about where we're at right now. I do have the pleasure of being able to come back to speak with you all later in the semester about other things advanced academics, um, such as Avid and Governor's Honors Program. But I did want to just highlight a couple of things that are noteworthy here in AP. We took sixteen teachers to professional learning this summer for Advanced Placement Summer Institute. That's the most we've taken in RCPS in three years. It is so important that our teachers are also getting professional learning um throughout. And these AP Summer Institutes um that you so graciously fund, they help our teachers um delve into the content with depth, get into the rigor, the instructional strategies, in order to give our students these opportunities. So I thank you for that as well. The other highlight I want to point out are new course offerings. We are offering AP African-American Studies. I'm excited about that. I mentioned that to y'all last year. And um we were one of the districts in the state of Georgia that was awarded that opportunity by the National College Board. So I'm very thankful for that. We are offering AP Precalculus as well as many other districts across the state. And we're offering AP Italian as well. And um Chairwoman Brown, thank you for meeting me on a Friday evening after work at Heritage High School to sign that for me. Um, AP Italian is something that RCPS is the first district to reinstate this course in several years. It was not offered in the state of Georgia. We had a need for it for students at Heritage High School. The school came to him with the need. I brought it toward the board and Dr. Oats, you so graciously extended that offer for us to offer it. It went before the state board last month. The deputy superintendent called me that night and said, Beth, you got it, AP Italian. But what I love about it, you helped not just the students of RCPS, you helped the students in the state of Georgia because that's now being offered at other schools as well this year. So I thank you for that. Um, the last thing I want to leave you with is the Office of Advanced Academics. This is our motto. This is what we believe in our hearts for our students. We believe that we are promoting a culture that affords our students opportunities by ensuring equity, exposure, and experience. Because we believe here in RCPS that we are locally developing, locally developing our students to be globally positioned. And that's our motto here in the Office of Advanced Academics. I thank you for the opportunity to share the wonderful things that our students are doing. Do y'all have any questions for me at this time?
Capstone, what schools operate?
So Capstone is going to be your AP Research and your AP Seminar. We offer that at Magnet. I am very happy to announce we have offered that now at RCA. Um, and when I come back, I can share with you some data points about our enrollment, how many courses we're offering and so forth. One of the things that we strategically put it at RCA is so the students at the traditional schools who want it were able to get it.
Okay. And AP Italian, um, so it's at Heritage right now?
Yes, ma'am.
And so if there's a student at, um, it's not at RCA, right?
Right, no ma'am, it's not currently.
If there are students at um Salem High School, um, RCHS that wants to be a part of this process, are we making, um, are we making it okay for them to actually um get exposure to this?
So my first answer is yes, we would definitely make it okay because I believe we've got to do what's in the best interest of students. And if a student needs that course, then we do what we have to do for that. Whether it was they're going to do it virtually with that teacher or whether we're going to bus them over there for the face-to-face class, we'll make that happen. We're going to offer them what they need. Um, but currently, to kind of go back and answer your question, the, the only current way that a student at one of the other schools would need that is if they transfer in. Because we currently don't have a student that's at that caliber. AP Italian is going to be like Italian four. So some of our schools don't even offer Italian at the moment. And then it would probably be a transfer student who came in that would need that course. But we would make sure they got it.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
You answered about three of my questions with what that one answered, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you all so much. I look forward to be able to come back and talk to you about the other things in advanced academics.
Thank you, Beth.
Dr. McDermott.
Good evening, Ms. Brown, Ms. Duncan, Dr. Oats, board members. Um, if I had known Dionne was gonna be here tonight, I should've just let her present this, uh, cause it is right along with CTAE. So we have contracted with Faithful Guardian. This is a renewal of that contract for the students at Conyers Middle School. In the, and it flows into the unmanned aircraft systems pathway at RCA. So this is the middle school version of that. And so, um, with that, we do have an action item because of the amount of money. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the MOU between Rockdale County Public Schools, Conyers Middle School, and Faithful Guardians. Faithful Guardian will provide aviation instruction to students enrolled in the Center for Technology and Engineering Specialty Program at Conyers Middle School. The instructor, the instructor will be a licensed flight instructor who is FAA licensed. Conyers Middle School will utilize an allotment from their local school allotment staffing plan for the cost. Um, and so the cost is approximately fifty-nine thousand dollars, and they pay for that out of their staffing allotment. And that's all I have. If you have questions, I'll try to answer, but I'm not probably, Dionne might be a better person to answer questions about that than I would be. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I don't have any specific updates, other than just to thank Dionne and Bethany for, uh, presenting on our, our, our fresh, uh, CTAE and advanced placement data. And we're devoting the month of August to have presentations on our twenty-twenty-three achievement data. Of course, um, next week, our assistant superintendents will present on our twenty-twenty-three milestones data. We've already begun offering some small board briefings that we concluded earlier this afternoon, uh, on our milestones data. And there's a lot of positives to report out of that, and also some areas for continuous improvement as well. Uh, I do want to share that, um, uh, we're going to, as I said, August will be devoted to the achievement. Now, one thing I will alert you to is that, uh, one of the, uh, big pieces of achievement data that will be the last to kind of come in will be our graduation rate data. That graduation rate, CTAE graduation rate that, uh, Dionne pointed out was for twenty-twenty-two, CTAE graduation rate of ninety-nine point thirteen, which by the way exceeded the state's, which was ninety-seven percent. Ninety-seven percent is not, uh, is not shabby at all, but we were very pleased to be at ninety-nine point thirteen. You know, if you look at all of the other CTAE metrics that you presented on tonight, uh, Dionne, it's, would seem to bode well for the forthcoming, uh, CTAE graduation rate, but we'll have to wait and see, right? Because when you get up to ninety-nine point thirteen, there's a, there's a little room there to work with. But we're very proud of that. Also, our four-year core graduation rate and our five-year core graduation rate, that will be later this month and possibly into next month. Um, but that's gonna be our last piece of major data from this past year. But I'm very pleased with the great gains that we've made on the data that we're sharing to this point. And I wanna thank you ladies in your departments for the work that you do, and obviously our teachers, uh, for the work that they do as being on the front line. So that's all I have, Chairwoman Brown.
Thank you, doctors. The cabinet has provided numerous presentations under information. I would like to ask the board members to please review that information. And at this time, we do have some time for recess. Is there a need for recess? Okay, well, we'll move on. Please review the July twenty-twenty-three board minutes and provide any edits to Ingrid. We will vote on the minutes at the regular session. There is no old business, and there is no new business. The cabinet has provided an overview of the action items for the board to vote on next week. Is there a motion for the action items to be placed on in a consent agenda?
So move Akita Palmer.
Second, Heather.
A motion to consider the action items under a consent agenda at the regular session has been made by, uh, Ms. Palmer and second by Ms. Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much. There is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion go into executive session to discuss personnel?
So moved.
Second, Akita.
A motion has been made to go into executive session to discuss personnel, um, by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, twenty minutes left.
The board has come back into open session at seven thirty four P M. Do I hear a motion that the board approved the superintendent's recommendation to assign Dr. Imani Mathis, currently graduation specialist at Rockdale County High School to assistant principal at Rockdale County High School effective August fourteenth twenty twenty three?
So moved.
A motion has been made by Ms Duncan and second by Ms North. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Do I hear a motion that the board approved the superintendent's recommendation to assign Dr Karen Wright, currently academic coach in DeKalb County school system, to assistant principal at Shoal Creek Elementary School effective August the fourteenth twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Okay.
A motion has been made by Ms Duncan and second by Ms Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Do I hear a motion to go back into executive session to discuss personnel?
Second, Akita Palmer.
Motion has been made to go back into executive session by Ms North and second by Ms Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Motion carries six to zero.
Personnel. Executive session.
Take your time.
My motion.
So moved.
Sandra.
It is now, um, can I get a motion to end, um, the executive session?
So moved.
Second, I can hear the phone.
A motion has been made for us to end a second, um, by, uh, Kita Palmer and, uh, by Ms. Duncan. All in favor. Motion carries. Good night everyone.